Welcome to the Town Council Meeting, February fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. It's at three twenty North Main Street, starting time six P. M., Council on Aging Media Room. We'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Slot machine's going off. I forgot to turn it off when I put in my code. I'd like to have a moment of silence for us to recognize our duties as members of the Town Council and to recognize all our first responders and veterans at home and away. Use it as you wish. Thank you. In accordance with Master General Laws, we are re-taping the meeting. It's taped by LCAT, the Select, Town Council's office, and is there anyone else that'll be taping the meeting? Okay, thank you. Public comments? Which we have none. Council responds to public comments. I'm assuming we don't have any. All right, that's great. Moving on, Denise, you're up. Town manager report.
That was pretty fast.
Yeah.
Nice to see everyone here this evening. A lot of pink in the room and red in the room. I'm sure that's in honor of our sweethearts that are not here and they're not with them. So, thank you for understanding, sweethearts. It's a busy time of year, Town Hall. Most departments' annual reports have been received and we will be putting together the two thousand sixteen annual report shortly. The Town Accountant and I are also meeting weekly to work specifically on the next year's budget. I've not been able to find a code of ethics for all Town employees, boards, and commissions. If anybody knows of one, please let me know. I will be looking toward proposing and implementing a code of ethics in the near future. Despite the challenges with the recent storms having presented, have presented to the Public Works Department for the work on the office space in Town Hall, it continues to move forward. The new conference room and Benefits Administration Office are within a couple of weeks of being completed and then we'll be moving some folks around for the next step of the project, which actually includes knocking down walls and stuff. So, it's a messy but dramatic piece of the project that will...
Because the last one didn't require all that stuff.
Well, not quite as much.
Hopefully, no vote barrier.
The Town Accountant and I recently attended a seminar on Municipal Modernization Act. I was tasked by the Council to look for the act's impact on areas of the government that would affect the Town Council's responsibilities. I found that a majority of the changes are geared towards simplifying and modernizing the internal processes at the Town. And I've given examples here, which include what's required for competitive bidding, retiree healthcare cost sharing. They're all kind of internal things. If I do see something that relates to parts of our operation that either the Council needs to help implement or would be affected, the Council would be affected by, I will certainly bring you up on, up to date on those. But as of...
You mentioned that because I had a conversation with Senator Lesser, those bills that... That bill particularly, if there is something that impacts us monetarily, the design of that bill apparently was not to impact us in a monetary way. So, if there is something that you guys come up with that incurs some kind of expense, then please let me know so that we can get to him because they are also looking to fund if, it's an unfunded mandate, for lack of a better term, and if there is something that we need to do that requires funding, the state is sort of on board to, to help us with that.
Sort of like early voting. I think he is working on some additional funding.
And I did have a conversation, not to be sort of on the, out there, but I did have a conversation with him and one of the, one of the requests I did make to him was that early voting was a mandate by the state, that we requested, they mandated that we do it. They gave us a certain amount of funding to do voting on Saturdays, which was a thousand dollars, which certainly didn't have any sort of impact or minimal impact, I guess, on our expense for the early voting, which some of his communities really had a good turnout for early voting. Some of the, some of his constituents weren't really...
Really? Wow.
Some of his areas weren't really high in air. But one of the things he did say is that they are working right now to pass a bill to sort of retrofund us for our expense for early voting and sort of, that was a conversation that I had with him not that long ago. Of course, they're working on it. There's no guarantees that we're going to get it, but it is something for them to look for in the future, just that if they mandate it, they will give us some...
Some relief.
Some relief.
Yeah. I don't have it on my report, but I also spoke with Senator Lesser's aide and spoke with him about possible funding of some of our more capital projects than anything else, aside from things that would be unfunded mandates. I'll be a pretty active participant in their process, whatever they need from us to, to help implement some changes or some funding for us. And I'm going to be forwarding to him descriptions of some capital projects that maybe Senator Lesser can help us at a state level to fund. So, I didn't, didn't think to put that in here, but...
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right.
It's like going on...
I'm kind of used to it. The Town Attorney and I have tried to reach written agreement with the tree four-one-three that would confirm their statements that they would be leaving their current site in the spring of two thousand seventeen. We received no reply to the letter sent to them that asked for some evidence of their lease at their supposed new location and a guarantee that they would be leaving the site by April fifteenth. With no reply to their letter, fines continue to accrue and the building official and Town Attorney will be going forward with a civil complaint related to their non-compliance. The building official is also working on other ongoing zoning enforcement issues. He's been pretty proactive in some of those.
Quickly, just to touch on tree four-one-three, and I know this is something we've been working on for a long time. This particular individual, we have gone out of our way, right, as a municipality to work with this individual to try and get them...
This was our last try.
I mean, it's not like, hey, here's the, here's the thing, we're going to put it forward. I just, I mean, just for the, you know, the taxpayers that are concerned or whatever, but this is sort of a concerted effort between everybody to get some compliance out of this particular piece of property that we're not getting.
This was a last attempt to try one more time to not go the route of, you know, court.
Right.
And it would have, you know, leveled the fines at some point if they agreed that, and they provided us with a copy of the lease for the new property, something, it was in a town just west of here, and they have not replied to the letter at all. So, we, we thought that if, in the time that it would take us to, to get the letter going into April fifteenth, they said spring, so I had said no later than April fifteenth that they would have to be off the property.
So, they argue with your timeframe. You could have told them.
So, well, they didn't argue. They didn't reply at all, although originally they said they'd be interested in something. So, that's, that's the last that we can do.
And I know we have been trying to do some enforcement on that property for a long time, so...
Absolutely, as long as I've been here and I don't know how, how long before that. With our human resource person in place, we are now advertising for Director of Municipal Finance this week and Director of Planning and Community Development next week. Those are both charter mandated positions. As with most other hiring, I expect we would have someone on board within a month of advertising for the positions. I also spec, expect that we'll be hiring a Building Commissioner soon. Marge and I and appropriate department heads are working on clarifying, modernizing, and hopefully simplifying a number of processes in various offices. As examples, licensing, licensing that is missing information, and Kevin, you are going to probably have to re-sign a lot of the licenses that have already been signed.
Yep.
Because we found that the licenses that were, that were on file didn't have some of the conditions that were supposed to be on them. So, we're reissuing them and you'll have to re-sign those. So, a lot of the tracking that goes along with doing that licensing to make sure we catch everybody, you know, that's supposed to be, have a renewal or whatever, is now being put in place and that's in, a great credit to, to Marge and my office. Permitting that hinges on multiple departments' approval. Sometimes it'll go from one department to another and they miss a department, so we're trying to find some way of tracking that. And also, at the same time, not have the taxpayers having to go from office to office to office. If we internally can inform the different departments, that should be part of our process to make us a little more customer friendly to the taxpayers. And how to better use the website for public, public notices. For instance, trash is off a week, a day, every day this week. We put something, I asked Marge to put a press release...
Oh, my trash out today.
Well, it'll be, it'll be picked up the next day.
Sure, and apparently I should look at the website.
And, and we're going to start putting on the website, I mean, on most of our, for instance, our licensing. If there's licenses that they can print off online, the applications and stuff, we're going to put right on the bottom of whatever documentation we send to people, letters that we send. Please go to the website, you know, whatever page it is and, and start getting people used to using that for a lot of their information.
Can I put you on the spot for a second?
That's twice in one meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not on purpose, I promise. But when we have a storm like the other night, right?
Uh-huh.
I did get calls from people, oh, my street didn't get plowed, and I'm thinking, well, you know, there's twenty inches of snow.
That was exceptional, yeah.
We'll sort of get there when we get there. However, is there, for DPW, is there a way for them to say, well, it hasn't got plowed yet?
You mean, on the website or...
Yeah, and sort of, in using that website, I guess, could we put something out there that says, LaSalle Street, for example?
Well, that's a, kind of a moving target, but certainly the Director of Public Works is here.
Oh, hey, Bob, how, I didn't see you.
His look is not quite...
And I'm not, I'm just using it as an example. I'm just saying, like, is there some way for the residents to not contact me?
To report it?
And report and say, my street didn't get plowed? Because I was like, okay, mine didn't either, but I don't really know what...
Yeah. Bob and I can talk about how to respond, yeah.
I mean, just something in the future, not, sort of something to work out, whatever.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
So, I put you on the spot, sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't, I don't have a good answer to that.
I'll try not to do, I'll try not to do it again.
Well, understand, and, and for everybody, this storm was an exceptional storm and we have the same crew, whether it's two inches or twenty inches.
No, and I get that.
So, you know, it's a constant...
Your priest is a choir. You don't even explain it to me.
Moving, moving target of which roads they've done. So, to do that online just seems like it would be very difficult, but we can talk about it and, you know, I'm sure...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what there is to even fix with it, or if there is anything to fix, but...
Okay. All right. Okay, so reminders. If you've not done your conflict of interest training required by the state, please let the clerk of the Council know and he can help you get that done. I am asking him for evidence of all the, and it's a huge task.
Yeah.
There's a spreadsheet that is this many tabs that Jeanie and, and Tom are working on. So, it's, it's not hard to do. It's, if you can't, if you don't have the wherewithal to do it at home, come into the office, we'll help you. Tom will help you, I'll help you. If I can do it, anybody can do it. And the Board, Board of Health, just another reminder that the Board of Health will be coming to the next meeting. Eric Lesser, I think, is coming March fourteenth, is it?
Yes.
To the council meeting on, on the fourteenth? So, a month from now. We don't have to wear pink that night. So, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and respectfully submitted Denise Menard.
I have a question.
Sure.
Just a follow-up to what, what Kevin was saying is, maybe we can reach out to Ryan, you know, Denise, and see if the entire Council can receive, be on the, the list to find out if the Town Hall is closed, because it wasn't on channel forty or twenty-two and so forth. I found out actually, I think, through Paul's Facebook.
It's my fault, actually.
I sent a notice to you all.
You sent it to me.
Yeah, I got a, I got a robo-call.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's...
So, you're not...
Not universal by the word robo-call.
So, well, it was my voice. Did I sound like a robot?
I didn't get it.
So, you're not on that, then?
Exactly.
No, I, I had you all added to the robo-call, so, so that you would know the Town Hall is closed.
All right.
I'll make sure. Did anybody else not get it?
I got it, but I already knew it was closed, so...
You got it, you got it.
I did not.
You did not.
Like, you didn't get it?
I didn't get it either.
Okay. So, anything that I send out, you'll, you'll get a notice of that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure. So, on to item six. We'll do six A approval of the open session minutes for February first, two thousand seventeen. I need to abstain because I wasn't here.
I wasn't either.
I was.
We don't have enough, right?
Three?
Three out of...
Just not enough.
We don't have enough to approve it.
Right, we're going to have to set that one aside. All right, we'll wait till next week.
I do have an outstanding question. I sent Sarah, albeit late, just a question on, when she made her presentation on financial matters, there was a comment about salt is the town's biggest expenditure, and I think we probably need to qualify that because I think it's probably a larger expenditure, maybe the largest expenditure within, or is it truly the largest expenditure?
No. When that comment was raised, we were discussing about the snow and ice budget specifically.
Okay, that's what I want to qualify, within the snow and ice budget.
So, we were saying, within the snow and ice budget, salt is...
And that'll be my edit. Jeanie, I'll just say that, within the snow and ice budget.
All right, for that, we can do that.
Can I make a comment on parliamentary procedure? I think I have been taught that even though you are not present at the meeting, if there are people that can make and second the motion, that you can vote on minutes, even, even if you were not present, if you're comfortable doing that.
I'm completely authorized.
So, you only had two people present?
Three.
Three.
Three present that are here and I think you can vote on them, but let's check with the Town Attorney.
All right, that's fair enough. Can we revisit that if he's good with, I can't believe he's not here.
Ah, he's...
He usually walks in at, like, right at this opportune time for us to do this. So, tonight we have some public hearings. So, under Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements, we have a, under A, we have a Community Development Block Grant Final Public Hearing for the Grant Application, John O'Leary from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The reason for this public hearing is to discuss the final step in the grant application process regarding towns of East Long Meadow and Hampden fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Community Development Strategy, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is represented this evening to discuss.
Thank you. Just wanted to find out, slightly...
There's Jim now.
I think you were getting, did you go to the...
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, this is John O'Leary.
Here's your pioneer.
Yes.
Hey, Jim, thanks for coming in. You're a daily...
I'm going to blow out the progress of the...
Council members from the, from left to right is, my left is Mike Kane, Kathleen Hill, Paul Federici, Kevin Manley, and Don Anderson.
Well, it's nice to see everyone again. I appreciate you inviting me back. I was here a few weeks ago to discuss the Community Development Strategy, another aspect of this application. So, tonight's meeting is basically, our public hearing is to offer both events of East Long Meadow and Hampden, the opportunity to comment on proposed projects that we put together for this year's application. So, basically, I'm going to go through the proposed projects. This, these projects have been put together with the Advisory Committee from East Long Meadow, including Denise, Robin, Diane, Robert, and Carolyn. In addition to that, I've worked with Hampden's Board of Selectmen and Administrative Assistant Pam Courtney there to kind of find out projects that would work both in conjunction with both towns. So, just going through the proposed activities, starting with the Housing Rehabilitation Program, approximately twenty units of housing between East Long Meadow and Hampden. Rough numbers will be probably fifteen units at East Long Meadow and five in Hampden. Then there's the ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan. That's Hampden. They're going to undertake that, assess their public facilities and, and basically, you know, review town facilities, conduct and prioritize list of projects that will be developed and a funding plan will be created.
John, excuse me for one minute.
Sure.
I just had a question to ask.
Sure.
On the housing rehab plan, right?
Yes.
That we share, where we have the fifteen and five units?
Correct.
Where are those taking place? Just...
Townwide.
Townwide.
Right. So, as of now, the town of East Long Meadow has about a sixty-person waiting list that have done pre-applications to our agency.
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, that's okay. Yeah, no worries. So, there's definitely a need, which is a great thing. Obviously, you can't get to everyone, but showing that there is a demand, I think it's going to be a great project to apply for.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. And then going on to East Long Meadow's Town Hall Accessibility Planning Project. This project will basically hire a qualified architectural firm and provide the town with a full range of options for bare removal and related federal ADA compliance, the provisions of services, so it can make a fully informed decision of how to address the Town Hall building, basically making it more accessible for residents. And then moving on to the ADA Sidewalk Infrastructure Improvement Project. This project basically consists of twenty-five new curb ramp installations, bringing it up to ADA standards. And then the mobile food pantry, which is shared between the both, two towns, and this is to hire two part-time staff person, persons and, and the procurement and outfitting of a vehicle to serve the mobile food pantry. So, that's basically the project, the proposed projects for the grant application. And although we don't have, we're only in draft budget form, it's going to be range somewhere between nine hundred to a million dollar grant, a hundred thousand, a million.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, now I'm going to ask that anyone wishing to speak, identify themselves clearly, state their home address and name for the record. Is there anyone that wants to speak on the project? Okay, seeing none.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Doc.
Hundred thousand to a million in grants. Let's say hypothetically it's somewhere on the lower end.
I thought, I thought he said nine hundred thousand to a million.
Oh, he said nine hundred, okay. I missed, my bad.
That's okay.
I was just curious how they prioritize if it was some, on the lower end, but when it gets to those kind of numbers, that's pretty good. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, sure. So, and then I would ask, yeah, if it's possible to add a motion. I've listed the, the two motions that were required as part of the application. If the Council wouldn't mind making them.
A motion for authori, authorization to Smith proposed fiscal year two thousand seventeen East Long Meadow Hampden County Development Fund Grant Application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development in amount not to exceed one million dollars as detailed in the public hearing and to include funding for a housing rehabilitation program, ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, East Long Meadow Town Hall Accessibility Planning Project, ADA Sidewalk Infrastructure Improvement Project, and Mobile Food Pantry Program. That's, that's a lot, but anybody that wants to second that can... So, moved. Seconded. So, it's moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second motion would be for, well, it's Chairman of Board of Selectmen. That's for Hampden, right?
Oh, excuse, excuse me, that should be Town Council. I apologize.
No worries. I just want to make sure we're, we're working on the right community here. The President of the Town Council will sign all required forms, documents, and authorizing, authorizations pertaining to the proposed fiscal year two thousand seventeen East Long Meadow Hampden Community Development Fund Grant Application.
So, moved?
Seconded. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I have a point.
Yes.
I think it doesn't have to go to you. I think it goes to Town Manager. Is that correct, to sign those kind of documents, Jim?
I'm sorry, what?
To sign the documents related to the grant, does, does the President need to be, President of Council need to be bothered with that or is it, is that in my purview? I think that would be in my purview, no?
I think it depends on the wording of the grant agreement.
Ah, okay.
Originally, it said the select, the Board of Selectmen in your position obsessively took over for the Board of Selectmen.
Right, so that's you.
So, did you mean it, the Board of Selectmen in her position?
I did not, no, that's an error. That's an error.
Okay.
Yes. It should be Town Council President.
Okay. Either way...
Tried to save you some work.
In most instances, it would be the manager now that you've taken over most of the responsibilities of Board Selectmen or the wording of the grant.
Yeah.
So...
So, can you say the President of the Council or the Town Manager? And then whoever it is that it should be?
All right, so, there's a motion for the President of Town Council or Town Manager to sign all required forms, documents, and authorizations pertaining to the approved, the proposed fiscal year two thousand seventeen East Long Meadow Hampden Community Development Fund Grant Application. Is there a sec? Moved? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, that was easy, though.
Thank you.
So, John, can you check on legality of that? Who is supposed to sign for the grant?
Sounds, sounds like we know what we're doing here.
Thank you.
And one last thing, could I ask you just to sign the sheet like last time?
No way.
The last time I asked, I probably...
While we're signing in, if I may, two birds with one stone.
Absolutely.
Mr. Donahue, if you're not here for a board meeting, can you vote on the minutes of the meeting in the following meeting?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Just wanted to get that out of the way.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's good. And so, our next three public hearings are going to be on pole locations, which is new to all of us, actually, but came up...
You weren't on the selectway long enough.
Good point. So, we have a pole location, the public hearing is going to be for Chestnut Street, Shaker Road intersection, and it's Verizon National Grid. So, the reason for this meeting is the whole public hearing to consider the request of Verizon New England and National Grid to locate poles along and across Chestnut Street. The council members from left to right is Mike Kane, Kathy Hill, Paul Federici, myself, Kevin Manley, and Don Anderson. This is a public hearing and the procedure is as follows. We're going to open the public meeting now. The clerk is going to read the notice and the record.
I can do that right now?
Go ahead, Doc.
In conformity with the requirements of Master General Law, Chapter one sixty-six, Section twenty-two, the East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that will hold a public hearing on February fourteenth at six thirty P. M. in the Council on Aging Media Room, three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow, to consider the request of Verizon New England Incorporated and Massachusetts Electric Company, N-Grid, to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used and common by petitioners along and across Chestnut Street. Place one jointly owned pole, number T dot one and a half slash E ten dash fifty on the northerly side of Chestnut Street at a point approximately one hundred and fifty-seven feet westerly from the center line of Shaker Road. Reason being to place one jointly owned pole to provide service to customer on the northerly side of Chestnut Street and to provide the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current, plan marked Verizon number one A one X four D V. All interest parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
This time, I'll have the advocate present. Is there a plan to the council? And just before you start, real quick, I have to say the meeting's being recorded and I'm... and I'll need all persons who are speaking to identify themselves clearly and state their home address for the record.
Okay, um, my name is Paul Davis. I work for a company by the name of UC Synergetic out of Sunderland. We are a contract engineering company doing engineering work for Verizon, and I am here tonight representing Verizon on their behalf. Very simply, this pole that's being proposed tonight is a, would be a service pole for that construction project on the corner of Shaker and Chestnut. I believe it's going to be at Cumberland Farms or whatever it may be. So, very simply, that pole would be a service pole for that building.
All right. Easy enough, right?
Pretty straightforward.
All right, so now I will open the hearing for public input. If there's any public input, does anybody want to speak, Captain? Are you doing all the other polls, too? You might not wanna leave.
I would, I would, yeah. I would now, no, Brent will also be on this poll, but I'll...
Same poll?
We will be attached to this poll for the service also, but I will also be speaking for the other two polls.
You wanna talk on this particular one?
Not particularly. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a service.
I mean, it's open for you to talk. All right, so, is there any public comment on that? Nope. Uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing then, and we'll discuss the matters pertinent of this poll, and then to take a vote on whether to approve it or not. So, anybody have any commentary on the pole location? Nope. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was easy. So, now we have a public hearing for, the reason for meetings to hold a public hearing to consider the request for National Grid to locate poles and corresponding hardware across the following public way of Highland Av- Highland Avenue? Highland Way, Highland View Avenue, sorry. Council members from left to right, Mike Kane, Kathy Hill, Paul Federici, myself, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson. Um, I'm gonna open the public meeting at this time. The clerk at this time will read the public notice in the record.
In conformity with the requirements of Master of Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that will hold a public hearing on February fourteenth at six forty-five, a little bit early, six thirty-five time, in the Council on Aging Meeting Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, to consider the request for National Grid to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the public way of Highland View Avenue. National Grid to install proposed pole one dash one to provide service to Bay State Gas Company. The location begins at a point approximately ninety-one feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Westwood Avenue. Plan marked National Grid Work Request two three zero three three two one nine. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Just a, just a point of order. Are we allowed to have, much as I would be happy to do it, are we allowed to have a posted public hearing even ten minutes ahead of its posted time?
I think you have to wait.
I think we have to wait.
Okay.
I mean, I know what I used, on my planning board days, if we had that, we'd end up going through other business that's not part of it. But again, I don't wanna have somebody monitoring us and then come back and we have to do it again. So, again, as much as I don't, you know, I would...
I guess this is for Mr. Higgins to figure out, right?
Yeah, so, I, I would say we table this public hearing for another ten minutes, so, just to keep it in...
That's fine with me, Doc.
Okay.
So, we'll move on then, quickly, to orders of the day, 'cause we have a couple of public hearings there, one's, one is six forty-five and seven. Great. Contract status of the Town Manager, Mike.
Um, we've come to terms with the contract. I think everybody's received a copy of that contract. I believe we'll go into executive session, and there might be a modification that will be recommended by the committee, which consists of myself and Kathy and Eric. Eric, obviously, who isn't present. So, we can talk about the change at that time, and then I would suggest going back into open and vote on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
New business. This is your approval financing presentation.
Is there enough time for that?
I don't think...
We might not have time.
You may wanna go, you might, you might...
Maybe if you take the licensing out of order, is the...
Yeah, as I say, why don't you do that? To give her the license. You wanna make a motion to take license matters out of order? Sorry, I'm sorry.
It'll be longer than five minutes, so...
Yeah, it's kind of a...
We don't wanna rush you. Or breaking it up.
So, I'll entertain a motion to take license matters out of order on the current agenda for two sep- September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. St. Michael's Church Family Life Commission, Saturday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, from six to nine. It's a one-day license for beer and wine. Their insurance is on file. All in favor?
Make a motion.
Take, make a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve this St. Michael's Church Family Life Commission, one-day beer, one-day license for beer and wine, February twenty-fifth, from six to nine.
Blessing. So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have a application for a one-day license for beer and wine from the Sonic Temple of East Long Meadow, Saturday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, from six PM to eleven PM. Their insurance is also on file. I'll entertain a motion to approve that. So moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bentley's Bistro.
The next item, because I'm a lifelong friend of ninety-nine percent of the participants, and someone I, I recuse myself.
Oh, you're gonna leave?
Take a straw, yeah.
Well, I gotta, we may be in an interesting situation, because I represented Bentley's originally when they applied for the special permit. I have not done any work since.
Well, that, you should ask Jim.
So, I'm gonna go through Jim. Is there a doctrine and necessity? I haven't done any work. I haven't received a dime.
No ongoing relationship with them?
None, no ongoing. Just specifically for the special permit appearing before the planning board and the then Board of Selectmen in the onset. That's it.
And you feel you could be impartial in this application?
Oh, absolutely.
You should do that and file a statement with the Town Clerk.
All right, Paul, see you later. So, at this time, we have a, uh, application for amendment of, for a change of beneficial interest or transfer of issuance of stock for Bentley's Bistro. So, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the amendment for application of change of benefit or interest, transfers, issuance of stock for Bentley's Bistro.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that one's done. We need to, uh, there is a, I'll entertain a motion to approve a common victory or license for Dimacorp, doing business as Subway, twenty-four Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. This was one that we needed to prove that, uh, there's been some back and forth with them, and trying to get this, this actual license approved, so I will entertain a motion for Dimacorp, DBA Subway, twenty-four Shaker Road for a common victory or license.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Probably bring Paul back here.
All right. Paul can come back. Oh, he could've came back earlier.
He could've come back on this.
We're just moving forward. We're moving forward.
Let me go get him.
And so, now I'm gonna entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess, 'cause we have, uh, five minutes before our National Grid public hearing.
You approve the Subway?
Paul, you wanna voice in on the Subway thing, or?
That's for new, uh...
Common victory license.
That's fine.
All right. So, now I'm gonna make a motion to take a five-minute recess until our public hearing. So moved?
Second.
There's a move and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's what we would do sometimes, just to...
Whoa, you actually, we're gonna hold a public hearing to request?
Yep.
We'll open the, uh...
Seven forty-five, one...
Come back to...
The pole location.
The pole location, public hearing for Highland View Avenue, and the reason for this meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the request of National Grid to locate poles and corresponding hardware across the following public way of Highland View Avenue. Council members from left to right, Mike Kane, Kathy Hill, Paul Federici, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson. At this point, I'm gonna open the public meeting. And Tom, if you could read the legal notice in the record, and for the record, the meeting's being recorded, I'll need all persons who are speaking to identify themselves clearly and state their home address for the record. Now, we'll have the count, uh, the applicant present their case to the council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read that.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Gonna sound just like it did last time.
You sure?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right.
In conformity with the requirements of Master of Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on February fourteenth at six forty-five PM in the Council on Aging Meeting Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, to consider the request of National Grid to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way of Highland View Avenue. National Grid to install proposed pole one dash one to provide service to Bay State Gas Company. The location begins at a point approximately ninety-one feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Westwood Avenue. Plan marked National Grid Work Request two three zero three three two one nine. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Now, while the applicant present their plan to the council?
Hi, I'm Lisa Jocinski with National Grid, and we're just looking for permission to set up. It's a private, well, it's non-private, it's in the public way, but it's a service pole for, as you mentioned, Columbia Gas, is it Columbia?
Uh, Bay State Gas.
Bay State Gas.
Yeah.
For the service, for a new service.
Easy enough, right? Sounds simple. Any wishing to speak? We're gonna open the hearing for public input. Anyone wishing to speak, please be direct to the point, not redundant. Does anyone have anything they'd like to offer? Please state your name and address.
My name is...
Come up, come up front. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Tyler. I live at two oh four Longview Drive in Long Meadow. I'm a representative for Columbia Gas. So, I just wanted to make a correction that it's not Bay State Gas, but Columbia Gas.
Okay, fair enough. That's it?
That's all.
Okay. That was easy.
Did our motion say Columbia Gas, or did it say Bay State?
It says Bay State.
It said Bay State. So, we should amend the motion to correct it to Columbia Gas, to be correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. When it's appropriate, I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else that'll offer a public comment on that? Nope. Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and at this time, we'll have the council discuss the matters pertinent of the plan.
The only thing I'm gonna add is, if I could make a motion that, in approving it, that we replace Bay State Gas with Columbia Gas.
Fair enough.
And then I will make a motion to approve with that proviso included.
Your motion with the provision of Columbia Gas is presented? So moved? It's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That being said, the public hearing's closed.
We got five minutes on that?
We got five minutes on that? Do we wanna wait?
Yeah.
We have, huh?
Last one's about seven o'clock, isn't it?
Yeah.
Seven.
We could send everybody out and do the executive session.
I was thinking, I was thinking we could do that.
Yeah.
You know what? Let's do it.
All right.
And, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session, discuss the Town Manager contract negotiations.
It won't be long.
And...
For the purpose of...
Return for the purpose of our public hearing...
Yeah.
For the pole location...
And to vote on...
On Maple Street. And to vote on the contract.
So moved.
All in favor, uh, first...
Individual.
Yeah, we gotta do that first, 'cause we gotta move the second, right?
Yeah. I was looking to see if you're still here.
Kathy moved it?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Paul seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don Anderson, aye.
Kevin Manley, aye.
Paul Federici, aye.
Kathleen Hill, aye.
Mike Kane?
Mike Kane, aye.
All right. Now, we are gonna return to open session for the Town Council meeting on February fourteen, two thousand seventeen at the Council on Aging. Just quickly, I think we will go to, uh, confirmation of the executive session vote for the Town Manager contract. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the, motion that was approved in the executive session, to approve the Town Manager's contract with the effective...
Changes?
Changes.
Amendments.
Amendments. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Pole location.
Moving along, back to our pole location. Have you, Avenue Wood Request?
No, we did that one.
We're done?
Yeah, we're doing the Maple Street.
I'm sorry, Maple Street. You're here for Maple Street, too, aren't you?
I am.
All right, good. Do the best. So, the reason for the meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the request of National Grid to locate poles and corresponding hardware across the following public ways of Maple Street. Uh, council members from left to right, Mike Kane, Kathy Hill, Paul Federici, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson. It's a public, the public hearing procedures as follows. We're gonna open the public meeting now. Tom, you can read the legal notice?
Yep. Yep. In conformity with the requirements of Mass General Law Chapter 166, Section 22, the East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on February fourteenth at seven PM in the Council on Aging Meeting Room 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow to consider the request of National Grid to locate poles, wires, cables, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way of Maple Street. National Grid to relocate poles sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four, Maple Street, to the southeast side of the road for a road widening project. Plan marked National Grid Work Request two-three-zero-five-one-zero-five-three. All interest parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
This is a reminder, the meeting's being recorded, and I'll need all persons who are speaking to identify themselves clearly and state their home address for the record. At this time, I'm going to ask the applicant to present their plan to the council.
Lisa Jocinski with National Grid out of Northampton, Massachusetts. Here to request permission to relocate three poles at the end of Maple Street to the southeast side, as was stated in the petition. There is going to be a development, I believe, going in the northwest side of the street at the very end there, and they need to widen that road a little bit, so we'll need to relocate these poles for that purpose. If we leave them on that side of the road, the services then become too long for the homes across the street anyway, so we need to provide for their service this way. It kind of kills two birds with one stone.
Fair enough. That's it, right? Anybody else wants to speak to the application? All right.
Now, one of those poles is the same as the Verizon pole or all three? You know, where's the commonality between what Verizon did and your pole?
Well, the commonality, the poles on this, this pole, like, you know, the poles that I'm petitioning for, they're going, the new poles going in are going to be solely on.
Strictly yours.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no Verizon crossover on this one?
No, the one that he did for Verizon will both be on, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and anybody has any discussion from the council? Nope. So I will entertain a motion to accept the proposal. So moved.
Second.
Moved in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That was easy, right?
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done here, done here. All right, new business. It's eight B, one. We are talking about the DIF program. So this is Julie Foley from Crowley Associates. And so she's going to talk a little bit about the DIF program, which I think actually has something to do with.
We need to change our lighting down or are we going to play it behind us?
Oh. All right. Easy enough.
First time we do this.
How do you know it worked?
We'll find out. There we go. I think you want to close this one.
Whoa. There's no light, shot it off my head, is there?
Can you put this one back on? Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's good. Thank you, Jean.
Get all that? Get all that?
No, any other.
Okay, okay, Lou.
Go ahead.
All right. My name is Vicki Donahue. I'm an attorney at Keene, Bredin, Myers, and I represent Fairview Extended Care Services, Inc. They're the owners of the property that's at three oh five Maple Street. That's the existing nursing home property. That property also, if you can go to the next slide, then the property, this is a new project plan, but the property that's shown on the, on the plan here is all of the premises, which is now part of the nursing home. The building that is to the north, which is on the top left, is the existing nursing home building. And we have a proposal going forward to actually sell all of the property to the west of the town line, so that the property in Long Meadow will, is under contract for purchase by Middle Franklin Development Group. And Mike Crowley is here to answer any questions with respect to that. Also have, to my right, Jeff Daly for CJC, who's going to talk a little bit later about the DIF program and what the mechanics are for that particular statutory provision that's available to the towns. And then we have Steve Severia from Fuss and O'Neil, who's going to answer questions with respect to the, the, I guess everyone understands to be the longstanding traffic issues in this Dwight Road, Maple Street corridor area between the two towns.
Vicki, could I also identify that we have staff members that have been active in the DIF process throughout. A parent, Robin McDonald, Diane, our assessor, and Sarah, our town accountant, have all been very active in the process as well, so it's been going through the whole process with all, all of us involved. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So we've been asked to present some information relating to the formation of the District Improvement Financing District here. That's under Chapter forty-Q. Jeff will talk a little bit about that. It's a statutory tool that's available to towns to encourage, in this case, commercial development in this area. And the district formation sets out a pathway for the town to construct major infrastructure improvements, and then also has a mechanism for the financing of those improvements. We thought it would be a little bit helpful to give some background on where we've gone so far, and I think as Denise has, has suggested, then we've had several conversations. Mike has been involved in this process, process for quite some time with officials both on the Long Meadow side and on the East Long Meadow side. So it started with the initial plan, dealing with all those parties, and then also dealing with both towns with respect to permitting. So this has been a kind of through the process for quite some time. And the, you know, one of, one of the points and concerns that's been coming up on a regular basis is the expectation with respect to the concerns about traffic. So Mike had commissioned a traffic study from Fuss and O'Neil. Steve had done that study. And then going back to the towns and talking about the results of that study, then both sides of, of the town line, then folks wanted to see about broadening out the scope of that traffic study, so that we could get a little better understanding about, I know, how we could try to improve traffic a little bit further afield from the actual main points of entry for the projects. So we just wanted to kind of give that background on how that coordination has been and moving forward. When Steve finished the revised traffic study, which was broadened out at the request of both towns, then there's been a joint peer review by both towns for that study, and have had some back and forth on what the scope of the work would be for the traffic infrastructure project that was the suggested at this point in time. So I think that Steve can talk a little bit about that in a minute, but obviously you can tell that with respect to that corridor, everyone knows around here that, that it is an existing problem. And the traffic study did reveal that there's going to need, need to be some, done some extensive work just to solve the current conditions that are in this area. The current scope of work for the project is about two point five million dollars, obviously something that's way beyond anything that any developer would be taking on. With that in mind, then we kind of stepped back and, and Mike had some conversations and brought in Jeff, and came up with this potential solution, if adopted by the two towns, to establish a DIF district in each town, identify the properties that are involved in that district, and then Jeff can talk about how the incremental taxes that are, that would then come, come on board as a result of the development in those districts, then that would pay for the infrastructure project. So I think if, if you don't have any questions at this point, then we would have Steve talk a little bit about the traffic situation and what the various mitigation measures are that were suggested and then have been reviewed by both towns.
Can I make a question? Steve, you're up.
Okay. As Vicki mentioned, our firm was retained to, initially to prepare the traffic impact report for, required by the site plan review process in both, in both towns, which was an assessment of the, the traffic characteristics of the, of the two projects and their impacts on, on the, the transportation infrastructure in the, in the vicinity. And the results of that study indicated pretty clearly that really the existing congestion at both intersections in, in Long Meadow, the Dwight, Maple, Williams, and Benton Drive intersection, and also the Dwight Road and Converse Street intersection, the existing congestion there really presented a constraint on the, the highest and best use of the development of the, of the properties from the standpoint of provision of adequate access. And so we then developed recommendations of local infrastructure improvements that could be considered to develop a better infrastructure environment for the development of the properties that would allow for freer flow of, of traffic around the, in the vicinity of site, of the site. And I want to kind of leave this site plan here for a minute, just so that we can see that the access points to the, to the development site are kind of at the perimeter of, of the, of the study area and the, and the corridors that are most heavily congested now. So consequently, the actual majority of the impacts of the site are really external to the, to the, to the actual congestion points of the major intersections. And so, you know, this, this, this improvement recommendation to, 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 to provide additional capacity is, is more related to the existing conditions there than, than to the, and the future conditions that account for additional travel demand in the future, rather than the actual impacts of the, of the project itself. It really is intended to, to improve the, the environment, to allow the development to proceed. So we can go to that. So the specifics of the improvement project are to, in Long Meadow, to widen Dwight Road, to provide increased capacity at, at the Dwight and Maple and Benton intersection with additional approach lanes, mainly from the, the southbound Dwight Road approach. In, on, at the northerly end of the Dwight Road corridor is the Converse and Dwight intersection, and that is proposed to be signalized. And, and it should be pointed out that both of these locations have pretty significant accident history, especially the Converse intersection, so there's a, there's a safety benefit to try and improve the operation of, of these intersections also, in addition to capacity benefit. In East Long Meadow itself, the proposal is to widen Maple Street within a few hundred feet of the Dwight Road intersection, and that's going to allow us to increase the length of the, the existing left turn lane that's there, so, so that it, it actually can handle the expected queuing of stop vehicles that are waiting to turn left onto Benton Drive and allow vehicles that are going through or, or turning right onto Dwight Road to bypass that, that standing queue of, of vehicles. And so that extend, that, that modification is actually going to extend into the site property on that corner, on the northeast corner of the, of Dwight and Maple intersection. And so that will result in a, in alteration of the, of the street layout there, the actual town along Long Meadow street layout at, on that corner. The improvements are also intended to extend out along Maple Street to the easterly site access, which is about where the, the current driveway to the nursing home is. And that whole section of Maple Street will be repaved, and there will also be a sidewalk constructed along the whole north side of Maple Street, along the entire site frontage, all the way from, from Dwight Road, all the way to the, to the easterly site access intersection. In addition, at the request of, of the East Long Meadow DPW, we are extending the project to the Benton Drive and Chestnut Street intersection for the purposes of replacing the traffic signal control at that location as well. So there will be included in the overall project, new traffic signals at Benton and Chestnut, at Dwight and Maple, and also at Converse and Dwight. And that, that signal system is intended to be coordinated to get through traffic progression through the, the, the three signals in the corridor. So we, in order to minimize the number of stops, the amount of idling, fuel consumption, and to maximize the, the number of vehicles that can, can pass through that, the corridor without stopping.
So just got a quick question for you.
Yes.
I'm assuming this is East Long Meadow.
That's Maple, right?
Yes.
Look at that. And so you're going to widen that so that there's a double lane for the left turn, and then there's one that can go straight or one that can take that right on the side of the island, right?
I'm not sure which approach you're referring to.
So I'm coming this way.
On Maple Street?
Down Maple. Towards Long Meadow, right?
Yes.
I'm going to be able to go right down Dwight.
Yes.
Yeah, right down Dwight, or I can go straight down.
That's Williams.
Williams, right. Or I can take that left on the bent.
Correct.
So that opens that, that intersection up where now is completely congested, right?
Right.
For a better term.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
The existing constraint is that there, there is a left turn lane there, but it's so short.
Always not wide enough or long enough to.
Yeah, you can never get into it.
Be able to take, you can't take a right or go straight if you're taking a left.
Yes, so that is the intent of the improvement on, on Maple Street.
In that point there, you're going to put a sidewalk there?
The sidewalk is actually, the town along Long Meadow has an existing project, it's a Mass DOT tip project, to install sidewalks on the entire length of Converse Street, on both sides.
Okay.
So the intent is, in order to provide kind of complete streets and.
Continuation there.
Pedestrian network connectivity, we're going to continue the sidewalk on the, on the south side of Converse, around the corner onto Dwight, and all the way down to the intersection.
Okay.
There's also going to be a signalized pedestrian crossing of Dwight, just south of the Converse Street intersection. And then there's also going to be a sidewalk down the whole east side of Dwight Road, all the way to the Maple Street intersection. And that's going to continue around the corner and all the way up Maple Street, across the entire site frontage, until we get to the, the easterly site driveway.
Okay. All right. That was it. Anybody else?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, that's good.
Okay, so Jeff, you want to speak to the DIF issue?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Daly, and I, I'm principal at CJC Development Advisors, and I've been working with Mike and the entire team here in East Long Meadow and Long Meadow to come up with an option of paying for what Steve just talked about. Obviously, the private developer is, is developing inside the property boundaries, and then there is some infrastructure work that needs to be done. And with that, how do we pay for that? Back in two thousand three, they've, Massachusetts created a program called the District Improvement Financing Program, otherwise known as DIF. And what a DIF does is it uses future incremental property tax from the property. So for example, if a building is built and there's no tax collected right now, if a building is built and you start collecting thirty thousand dollars a year for the tax of that building, those taxes are earmarked, if you will, to the DIF program by Mass General Law Chapter forty-Q, to pay for any bonding infrastructure needs that surround it. So it's really, the DIF is what I like to call growth that pays for growth. The towns or cities can recognize that there may be infrastructure issues that are public-owned, and to make the private development sites more attractive, or to make a development project more attractive for the infrastructure, they really create this program for that. Because a lot of times, you folks being at the town council and know well as well budgets are very tight, and a lot of times towns can't afford really to add additional services or, or infrastructure costs without getting in the long line of, of tips and other things that are available. So the DIF really provides an opportunity for the town to say, yes, we want to make this development site more attractive, but we know we have some infrastructure problems, so how can we work together to get this done? And so the, it's not a tax break. It basically allocates the taxes for the incremental growth to pay for any infrastructure bonds or, or fees that, that need to be paid for. And again, the DIF was created in two thousand three by the Mass General, Mass General Law Forty-Q was created in two thousand three. Up until March of last year, March of two thousand sixteen, it was managed by a regulatory authority called the Economic Assistant Coordinating Council, the AACC. They also manage TIFs, if you guys have heard of the TIF program, Tax Incentives. They also manage that. Recognizing that they don't really have any skin in the game managing these projects, it's better to manage them at the local level, the, the EACC voted in March of two thousand sixteen to transition the authority of the DIF programs to the municipalities. So you may have heard of DIF just in reading papers, but there aren't many out there. And honestly, because of the state, there was, I mean, if we submitted a DIF program to you today and the state had to review it, you'd have a book this thick, and it, it was just very complex. Worcester and Somerville were the only two that did it through the, and Quincy did it through the state. And you go online, there's chapters and verses of, of different things. Brockton, the. Recognizing that they don't really have any skin in the game managing these projects, it's better to manage them at the local level, the EACC voted in March of 2016 to transition the authority of the DIF programs to the municipalities. So, you may have heard of DIF just in reading papers, but there aren't many out there. And honestly, because of the state, there was, I mean, if we submitted a DIF program to you today, and the state had to review it, you'd have a book this thick, and it was just very complex. Worcester and Somerville were the only two that did it through the, and Quincy did it through the state. And you go online, there's chapters and verses of different things. Brockton, the city of Brockton just was the first one to implement this, and if this goes, as we hope it goes, through East Long Meadow and the town of Long Meadow, this would be the second one in the state to be implemented by the towns, managed by the towns. So, it's a really exciting opportunity, number one, but it also helps a property that, and more importantly, the intersections that Steve just spoke about, but also a developer who wants to come in and really do some good things, and a business that's already there to help assist them to grow as well, and create more tax revenue for everybody down the line. So, what do we need to do to pay for that? Number one, what we're sitting here before you tonight, and we sat last week in front of Long Meadow, is two things you would need to do, is the first thing, each town, according to Mass General Law 40-Q, each town needs to create a DIF district. So, you would be voting on a district that would include only your town, Long Meadow would do the same. So, there'd really be two districts within one property. And then, what we would do is, once that's approved, baseline assessments are established, so the baseline of what you're receiving today for taxes, the values of those buildings, would be assessed, and they'd be locked in at that point. And then, any incremental growth beyond that would then be earmarked towards, or incremental growth or fees through developer agreements would be earmarked to pay for the bond that we would ask the town of Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, to get together and work on. The excess tax revenues after the debt services is retained can go back into the general coffers, and we'll get into the weeds of that a little later, but the DIF district is the first thing that we ask you folks to be voting on, hopefully tonight, because that needs to be established first. The second thing is the financial plan, which you probably all have in front of you, I think, I would hope. It really details the plan of what the DIF is going to perform, paying for the bond, and how we would get, how we propose getting there. There are some financial spreadsheets that were also included, and Vicky and Mike can speak of those in a little bit about the bonding and the payment plans. The next is, where is the DIF? And we talked about that, you folks would be voting on creating the East Long Meadow DIF district, and I forget the exact language we used in your motion, but it is.
The Maple Street Improvement District.
Thank you. It is identified there, and it is also identified in the plan, so both will reflect each other. And again, it really is growth that pays for growth. It pays for public infrastructure that supports development. And we talked about what Steve talked about already, the Converse and Dwight, Dwight and Maple, Dwight and Chestnut and Benton, and also the cost of the 2.5 million budget for that, for public infrastructure work that this DIF would then support. And I guess if there's any questions on DIF, I'd be happy to entertain those now, if not, I'm going to turn it over to Vicky, and she can talk a little bit about the East Long Meadow financial impacts, if you will, but if there's any questions about DIF, now or later.
Quickly, the whole DIF, basically the point is that we're going to use tax revenue from the property that's being developed to defray the cost of.
Yes.
Or earmarked specifically for the cost of infrastructure improvement.
Exactly.
So, for people that don't understand all the sort of lingo, is, you want to develop the property, there's going to be a certain number of monies that are earmarked to do the improvement at the intersection, which we can all agree probably needs to be done anyway.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Exactly.
Thank you.
If I may.
Go ahead, Paul.
I was going to say, without putting Charlie on the spot, it would probably be a good idea for him to just explain how we got into the Long Meadow, East Long Meadow relationship as the bigger picture of this whole development. But Paul, you had a question?
Well, I was just wondering, so, this project comes on board, and the DIF program spent being used to finance the structural improvements of the highways and everything. Just to be the devil's advocate, what happens if the project fails? Now, you've got a town with 2.5 million dollars worth of development and no way to pay for it. So, I was just wondering if, I mean, you might be answering that in your, and I don't want it to fail, let me put that right up front, but, you know, nothing's, nothing's set in stone in life, so, that was just a question that popped into my head.
I would defer to Vicky, if I could just add one thing, Mr. Counselor. The DIF program is a mechanism to support public infrastructure and also private development. So, it's not an encapsulated program that you would manage, it's a mechanism to support that. So, it would, as the Chair of the Council said, it would earmark those funds.
Right.
Within the property to pay for that infrastructure project.
Well, I realize that, but what if all of a sudden, there's no property to pay for it?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that Mike can speak to the Long Meadow side, because most of the, almost primarily or all of the dollars are going to be coming out of the Long Meadow side. Mike's project.
That's one thing you have to sort of clarify, is the taxable property is on the Long Meadow side.
Yeah, in part, will be. Yeah, so what we have is, for the project, I mean, the DIF is set up just because you want to encourage the development, and because the work needs to be done.
Right.
And then, so then we talk about, usually what happens is, people will set up a DIF, and then they'll follow up by having a project, and then that's when they're going to figure out how they're going to fund what the infrastructure improvements are going to be. Here, they're close in time, because, you know, the project is here at hand. So, the budget was developed for the entire project, for both sides of the town line, and came up with the budget. Based upon Mike's firm doing their project in Long Meadow, then they're going to generate revenues that are necessary to pay the bond. So, the bond will be floated by Long Meadow. You guys will have an intermunicipal agreement with Long Meadow that says that you're going to pay under this particular formula that hasn't yet been passed in Long Meadow, but under this formula, because they're going to be looking at it again, under this formula, then East Long Meadow is only required to pay $20,000 a year towards this, for the 20-year term. You guys are kind of covered, because my client, Fairview Extended Care Services, has said that, at this stage, when they, they're going to construct a new nursing home on the property, the old nursing home building will, in the future, be likely converted to assisted living. The assisted living piece will be taxable, the new nursing home is not, because that's a tax exempt use as well. So, we have agreed that the current owner on the East Long Meadow side will make that contribution to the town of East Long Meadow of $20,000. And it'll be in the nature of either a developer payment or taxes, so that if any of the property comes online, then whatever taxes are paid will reduce the amount of the $20,000. So, we have $20,000 they're paying. So, if there are no taxes, we pay $20,000 out of pocket. If the property becomes taxable, and there's $10,000 of tax, $10,000 will be tax money, $10,000 will be developer payment. If in the future, there's the development to do the renovation for the old skilled nursing facility into assisted living, and it generates $25,000 of taxes, we're still going to pay the $25,000 in taxes. We're not going to make any developer payment, because it exceeds the 20.
Right.
You're going to pay 20 to Long Meadow and keep the 5.
Okay.
So, I think that, that kind of answers it for your side, and then Long Meadow is the side that has to, you know, determine what that has in, and Mike's going to be having his own developer agreement with the Long Meadow side to talk about putting up either a letter of credit or bond to show that, you know, the building will be built, so that the funds will be available.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
That answers my.
Yeah. Do you have any other issue want to present to us?
I think so.
I have a question for Mike.
Yes.
What is the proportion of property in East Long Meadow versus Long Meadow, roughly?
Mike, the entire site's roughly 20 acres, and I'm acquiring 7.18 acres, which is all the land in Long Meadow, which is to the west of that red line that you see there. So, the land in Long Meadow is owned, professional office, excuse me. So, my development is a development that's by right. This, if I could back up, Mike, a little bit, this goes on, and I think to speak to what Denise had asked me to kind of touch on, this goes back to fall of 2014, and I was approached by Bay State Medical Center. They had a requirement for 50,000 square feet of medical office space that they were trying to achieve, specifically in Long Meadow. I had a relationship with the President of Fairview Extended Care, I called him, and I asked him if he'd be willing to sell me his land that was situated in Long Meadow. He agreed to that, recognizing that the relationship between Bay State and Berkshire could be one that could be mutually beneficial. So, after a lengthy period of time of multiple discussions with Bay State and Berkshire, we agreed on developing the property as a campus originally. We were going to be developing the medical office building early on. As we started through the discussions between the two organizations, it became clearer that Berkshire wanted to come on, bring their development on simultaneous. So, originally, we were looking at just the seven acres of land in Long Meadow, and I had hired Fussin O'Neal to do a traffic study in that regard. Once we found out that Berkshire wanted to bring their development on simultaneous with the medical office building, we kind of stopped the process there, because we were originally just going to go get permitted in Long Meadow, we said, wait a minute, it's not fair to the two communities to permit, to go out about permitting these two developments in silos. So, we started having joint planning board meetings, I think that's probably the first time that's ever happened as well. And we've had a few of those, actually, where we've gotten together, the two planning departments. I'll say that you're, the staff here at East Long Meadow has been unbelievable, Robin McDonald, and Diane Bishop, and Bob Parent, and Sarah's come in lately on the finance side. And it's just been remarkable about what we've been able to accomplish. So, you know, every time we found a challenge, we were able to figure out a way to solve it. And the biggest challenge was, once we decided that we should really look at this as an entire campus, because they were going to be developed at the same time, we got together with the towns, and the towns said, you know what, we really need to look at a comprehensive solution to this intersection, it's already bad, you know? The traffic study that we had commissioned indicated that those three intersections that Steve Severio talked about, the Converse and Dwight, the Maple and Dwight, and then the Chestnut and Benton, were already very much overburdened, and some resolution needed to be made. Our development's going to add marginally to that, to that overburden some as well, denigrating slightly, but primarily, where we were going to have a challenge is where the site empties onto Dwight right now. And we knew that a left-hand turn going southbound was going to be problematic. We listened to the planning boards, we listened to both towns' engineers, and we said, well, let's go out and expand the scope of services for Fussin O'Neal and the traffic study. So, we looked at all four buildings as if they were coming online at one time, and what impact that would have on the intersection. And along with that, we asked them to additionally expand the scope and say, tell us what we need to do to comprehensively address the situation at these three intersections. And Fussin O'Neal has come up with a proposal to do that, which Steve Severio recently spoke about. That project is actually about a $2.9 million project, which we've called back down to 2.5. Berkshire and myself, as the developer of the Long Meadow side, have agreed to pay approximately $300,000 in actual capital to initiate and pay for Fussin O'Neal's engineering to go forward. We're also going to make a contribution to the town of East Long Meadow to study and perhaps do some mitigation work, if possible, at the Westwood Intersection and Maple Street. At the request of East Long Meadow, as Steve said, Bob Parent in particular, we're replacing the signalization at Benton and Chestnut, we're putting in, we're extending the pavement all the way up to the property line for Fairview, we're putting in sidewalks along the north side of Maple Street. So, and with all that, we're going to dramatically improve the entire corridor there. And Steve has this really cool program, I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it actually simulates, video simulates how the traffic will ultimately move through the intersections. But the, what this is all about today is figuring out a way to do this. Once we saw that, because there's just no way that our development could pay two and a half million dollars for off-site traffic mitigation, just, the project wouldn't happen. And frankly, the project might not happen if we don't do the traffic mitigation efforts. We could probably go in and get permitted in a silo, but it wouldn't be such a good project, you know, we're still going to have congestion at Chestnut and Dwight, it would be hard to get in and out of the site. Would the town of Long Meadow permit us, without doing a major reconstruction of this intersection, perhaps? Would East Long Meadow permit the skilled nursing facility, the new skilled nursing facility? Probably so. That's an allowed use by special permit, and it's a replacement of an existing facility, they're not adding any more traffic to the intersection. So, chances are, if we went in independently in the two towns, we'd probably get permitted, but we'd have a lousy intersection still. So, we said, well, let's find a solution. That solution's two and a half million bucks. We can't afford to pay that, so let's, so we said, well, let's find a way to figure out how to pay for it that doesn't cost the towns any money, and allows the towns to potentially gain significant tax revenues going forward. And clearly, the tax benefit, the incremental tax benefit that's going to annure from these projects primarily will go to Long Meadow, because of the fact that Fairview is a not-for-profit entity, and their development currently is tax exempt. But, and their new facility that they're going to build will be tax exempt, but the second facility, the existing nursing home that they have, which will be repurposed into memory care units, will be taxable. So, they're, you know, assuming the market stays strong for that product, there will be additional tax dollars over and above the $20,000 that they've committed to pay for this. So, there will be a tax incremental benefit to the town of East Long Meadow as well, and as well as getting the.
But aside, right, if there's no growth in that market, we still.
You still get your $20,000 that you have to pay.
With the $20,000 offset of.
Oh, yeah.
And the improvement.
Absolutely.
Sort of to that intersection, right?
Exactly.
So, it's like.
Exactly.
We hope that, not that I, I don't know, it's kind of weird that I would hope that there's a growth in that market, I guess, but, you know, for tax purposes, I guess, there's a whole, there's a growth there, but if there's not any growth there.
Yeah.
Right, we still.
No, you're break even. And you get a new intersection.
That's my point.
And which obviously allows for potential growth in other areas of East Long Meadow, and particularly the industrial park, and perhaps now Chestnut Street, the old package machine facility, and, you know, myriad other options, development options that may exist in East Long Meadow that probably would be thwarted because of this intersection if it's not repaired.
But it starts tonight with the creation of the DIF to make a draft.
That's exactly right. Thank you, Mike.
Bob, you're here.
I wish I could be that succinct.
Works quickly, Bob.
Do I come up, or?
Yeah, come on up, because I just want to get your take on.
From a public works perspective, I mean, it seems like when we're talking about this thing, you've obviously been involved in this process, and you know, what's sort of, I guess, what's your thoughts?
I think what Mike indicated is correct, that we've been talking for a year and a half or so about solving a problem that's really an existing problem.
Right.
And this project becomes a vehicle to solve the existing problem, and provides the revenue source to solve the existing problem. Steve Pray and myself have been talking for a couple of years in Long Meadow, wouldn't it be nice to do something with these intersections, but neither community was going to be able to come forward with any significant amounts of revenue to be able to solve the problem on its own. So, most likely, the intersection without this project would stay as it is for some extended period of time. This allows the problem to be solved, allows, provides the revenue source to solve the problem, and has lots of secondary benefits, as Mike indicated, in terms of, you know, impacting travel through town, out of town. Most of the project, I don't know if it's clear, is actually in Long Meadow, the Converse intersection is in Long Meadow, the Maple Street intersection is actually in Long Meadow, and we have residents calling every year saying, what are you going to do about the problems at the Maple Street intersection? And we respond and say, it's not our intersection, we can't do anything to solve those problems. Call Long Meadow. You know, that doesn't go very far, but that's the reality, is it's not something we have direct control over. The Chestnut-Benton intersection is ours, and that will be fully upgraded with state-of-the-art hardware coordinated, so this whole corridor will function much, much better than it does currently. So, technically, it's a very good solution to a problem that is existing today, it isn't going to fix itself, so it's a way to fix a problem that we need to fix and.
I want to hear from you, is what do you think about it? And obviously, you think it's a good solution.
Very positive, yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Denise, do you have anything to say this one?
I don't think so. I think this is a positive for both communities, and we have to work out the intermunicipal agreements and all of that. This is sort of drawing the line around what is going to be that district, and it's the preliminary step for getting a creative solution to a big problem. I'd never. I'd never seen the intersection at rush hour, and I did last week. And it was a disaster.
Oh, you actually saw it?
It was a disaster, because my husband was driving, and we had to wait through three lights before we could get through. So it really is, it's certainly something that's needed, I think. And, and this is, to their credit, they found a way to do it without it impacting the town's taxes, and yet, and for Berkshire to help to step up and make that contribution for our, our portion of it is, is a real good deal for, for us, I think.
I guess the next point would be, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the creation of a district improvement financing district, known as the Maple Street Improvement District. For the purpose of facilitating roadway and related improvements proximate to the district for the term of 22 years and date of Long Meadow district adoption, the district will consider approximately 13.08 acres of property and encompass properties currently known as 305 Maple Street, 313 Maple Street, 319 Maple Street, and 331 Maple Street. So...
Second?
Second, is there any further discussion?
The only comments I want to make on...
Just a question for the developers. If this vote, if you take votes tonight on a sketchy plan as to what's going to happen subject to actions by Long Meadow, does the statute allow the board to revoke?
Yes.
The approval?
Yeah, that's why I would like to have language to that effect within the motion. And also, since the description of the property is somewhat, pardon the pun, sketchy, I'd like to have annexed into the motion a exhibit of it, so we, we're making sure we're not encroaching on any other, any other butters who are not part of this process. And so it's really site-specific, so instead of the approximation that we actually have an Exhibit A, which with very clear meets and bounds.
Yes.
But also that the motion is conditional upon Long Meadow coming to a satisfactory, satisfactory, you know...
Agreement.
Agreement as well. So that this is a, this is not going to be a standalone motion if something doesn't come together with Long Meadow.
That's correct.
And I think we should have a specific date for them to go into effect, otherwise we can revisit it down here. Is that reasonable?
Very reasonable. And if I could just address that a little bit, Don, in terms of process?
Sure.
We had our first meeting in front of the Board of Selectmen last Monday, I believe. We have a next meeting on the 27th. We're hoping at that point in time, the Board of Selectmen will adopt a resolution that will allow them to create a warrant article. Again, their process, governmental process, is different than East Long Meadows at this point. They have a town meeting process. So the, we need to have the Board of Selectmen authorize a warrant article that creates the DIF, and then another one that creates the financing plan to pay, to pay for the infrastructure improvements. And that won't occur, and, well, we'll get on the warrant article, which will be printed in sometime in April. It'll be then mailed out to the voters of the town of Long Meadow, and then they have a town meeting, Julie, May night? May 7th, I'm sorry. So we're hoping that the town voters will approve that, both, both motions.
Is that a simple majority town meeting, or is that a supermajority, they need to have that approved?
I don't know the answer to that, but I believe, Don, I believe it's a simple majority.
And our vote, Jim, is a simple majority, or do we need a supermajority to approve this DIF?
The second question I have with respect to the information that was presented to the council tonight, the language used, it uses interchangeably, the town meeting, parentheses, Board of Selectmen has the authority for approving various things. And I understand the bonding vote has to go through town meeting, but under the statute, who is the entity that is going to be entering into the contract and driving it for Long Meadow, as you understand it?
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
And then my second question is...
As authorized by the town meeting.
So as, so my second question is, why is not the town manager in East Long Meadow as the chief executive officer, the person who's actually negotiating and approving the contract to submission to the council for its approval?
Well, we actually thought that might be the process, but I, I think, Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, we wanted to make sure that the council had been fully briefed on, you know, the complexity of this, Jim.
Well, there's a difference between fully briefed on the complexity and who is to take the votes necessary to go forward.
Yeah, I defer to your judgment on that, Jim, as to who is the approving authority in the town.
If I can call out...
Actually, it is the...
It is the town council?
Yeah, it is the town council.
It calls it out in 40-Q, no, to create the program in the district.
But then there's the, the municipal agreement, which is independent of that.
Right.
That would be the town.
That's the manager and the select.
So 40-Q requires the vote here by the town council in this type of governing body to approve the district and to approve the financing, and then the, it then delegates under the statute the power to enter into contracts that would be done at the town manager.
So Jim, the question is then, for you, just I got a question for you now, is, so if we vote to create the district and the financing piece, all the logistics of that that we just talked about with Long Meadow, the contingency on Long Meadow and everything else, comes under Denise?
Stop pointing your finger at me.
If you vote with the existing contingencies, that makes it subject to approval by the Long Meadow Selectmen, the execution of an intermunicipal agreement, and...
The town meeting.
Appropriation of the vote to establish the district and appropriate the funds necessary by town meeting. Yeah, I think, if you can back out, if all of those things don't happen, I think you're okay.
So I have a suggestion, just because the, and I wasn't aware, the Long Meadows Selectmen's vote is the 27th, which is the day before our next meeting. So to, to maybe make those few changes, specifying what Don Anderson was, was asking for, and, and maybe be a little closer to something that we know is going to move forward, to wait until the 28th, that wouldn't stop anything. If, if on the 27th, you, you all know that the Board of Selectmen in Long Meadow have approved this to go to town meeting, then on the 28th, we could make our motions on, on the similar thing, knowing that it would be contingent on passing at the town meeting on X date as approved by the Board of Selectmen on the 27th. Would that make...
Yeah, the only thing I...
Could I just?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm not suggesting definitively that they're going to vote on the 27th. We're hoping they will vote on the 27th. Stephen Crane believes that they'll vote on the 27th, but we won't know that until they actually take a vote. I actually think that if East Long Meadow moves this, this evening, that it's going to go a long way in helping Long Meadow become comfortable with moving it in their town as well. That's my personal...
Well, the board has...
Subject to, subject to the conditions that, that Mr. Anderson suggested.
Well, I guess, I mean, subject to those conditions, it's sort of pointless to...
I think, if I may, Mr. Council President?
Yeah, go ahead, absolutely.
I think in the motion, it, it clearly states, and I don't have the motion, is this it? I apologize. 22 years from the date, the Long Meadow district adoption?
Yes.
So adopting a district, there is no financial...
There's no obligation.
There's nothing. I mean, you could...
Until Long Meadow does it.
You could say right now...
And that won't happen until May.
You could say you want to create a DIF district across from American Saw on that property tomorrow, and make it more appealable to, to some folks that come into the town. That's what a DIF is. It, it also acts as a tool to make it attractive.
DIF more or less is to attract business.
Right. So the DIF district has no obligation. You can keep it open for 22 years if this project fails and nothing comes.
There's no obligation.
There's no, there's no risk for the town. As far as the financial plan... What's that?
We're not putting anything on the line, it's more or less...
You're creating a district.
Once yours succeeds in the adjacent town, we reap the benefit of that, right? I mean, more or less, that's what we're looking at, right? I mean...
And if all else fails, you have a DIF district that really...
It's established and sold fee.
Correct.
Somebody comes in, they use it for what they need.
And as far as the financial program, you're not financially committing any dollars to it. And I agree with the counselor to the left, Counselor Anderson, that you may want to put a couple stipulations, you know, pending the approval of the Long Meadow DIF plan, because you're going in this together. So even extending it two weeks as, as Madam Administrator suggested, it...
Is that your new name?
I don't, I don't know if that is going to enable you for anything else either. It's going, you're going to put the language in there to say, if it's...
No, it's really specific to this project, right? I mean, that's what we're looking at, is it's...
And it is...
Specific to this project, this intersection, this piece of development, right?
And if you, and if you read through the plan, the plan states that most of, almost all of the funds are going to come from the Long Meadow side to support the growth.
Which is on the Long Meadow side, not that I'm going to argue for Long Meadow, but they need as much growth as they could possibly get without revenue generated from their residents.
So I, I think my argument is...
So I might see it as a huge issue there.
My thinking is, if we can rework the first motion and have, you know, again, more specific plan and next to it incorporated, and all the provisos that Town Council has mentioned, as well as myself, in there, but I'm not prepared to vote on the second motion involving the financial commitment, until I have something more certain from our friends in Long Meadow. So just to create the district is one thing, but to actually start dealing with the dollar amounts without Long Meadow's approval, I'm not quite prepared for that, speaking for myself.
I, I guess I, I'm just wondering in terms of your comment, Mike, I don't really know the dynamics as between the two towns. In terms of this particular project, then Long Meadow is taking on the lion's share of the responsibility for the financing. They're going to be the, the district, their district is going to be floating the bond, and then the piece that's going to be coming for the, you know, debt service for the $20,000 is going to be coming from my client to you, and then from you over to Long Meadow. I understand what you're saying about waiting on the vote to make sure that they vote it. It seems to me, however, that theirs is the harder vote, and it might be helpful for them to be able to say, there's no, we don't have to wait for East Long Meadow to do this, they're already on board.
I think we've already shown, we've already demonstrated being on board by creating the district. I think as far as the dollar amounts and the 20-year, $20,000 and so forth, I think that it, I think volley back to Long Meadow, let them make that commitment. But I think the fact we established a district, I think speaks volumes, in my opinion.
I, I think it's very, very helpful. I really do. Thank you, and I appreciate that, if, if in fact the motion prevails. So could I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Don, do you, would you be comfortable in approving, having us come back for approval, say, first week of March, or your...
Sure.
...meeting, once the Board of Selectmen, presumably the Board of Selectmen have agreed to put it on the warrant article? Because otherwise, we're waiting until May.
So we just throw something out there, is, so if we, based on sort of the things, all the parameters that we've set forth just recently, and we say, okay, we're going to, we're all right with creating the district, the DIF, right? Contingent on Long Meadow and whatever, tonight, does that help you?
Yes, I believe it does. I believe it helps the whole project.
Motion two, which is the 20-year improvement and all that other stuff, we could visit that in March, like you say.
I don't, I don't ask the council to do anything that they're not comfortable with. So if it means deferring that, that vote to some future date, then let's do that.
But as far as advancement of the project, because nobody wants to, I don't think anybody really wants to see the project delay, but of course, it's an intermunicipal agreement, which is never clean, right?
No, there's, you know, we're learning this as we go.
Right.
You know, this is totally new. I mean, there's only been four of them in the state in 14 years, so we're, we're really kind of trailblazing here. And I think that...
Well, thanks.
No, I, I do, I think it's, you know, I think it's a great template for potential future developments in a lot of different areas.
I'm not, honestly, I don't have any objection, me personally, with the development of that intersection, sort of this personal, personally object to any of this agreement either. I just want to make sure, sort of town-wide, we're...
I, I understand.
We're in a good spot.
I understand. And I, and I, you know, that's what we're here for. We're here to work with the town and work with the council. We all have to get comfortable with this. And, but I, I think, I do think, back to your question, creating the DIF tonight is going to go a long way.
That makes sense.
So at that point, I would say that we would make a motion to create the DIF, known as the Maple Street Improvement District.
Motion one only.
Motion one in the draft of facilitated roadway and related improvements proximate to the district for the term of 22 years from the date of Long Meadow district adoption, which is what we talked about, right?
Right, and we understand that the owners of 305, 318, 319, 331 Maple Street are all on board.
Right.
All right. None of these, and then we have a, we annex into the motion a, you know, meet and bound, a plan clearly showing what we're talking about, so it's not, you know, approximating crosskin to any butters property. And I probably remember your qualifications for, what I said, with those three items, Jim? Were they...
An acceptable intermunicipal agreement between the, the approval by the Board of Selectmen that they're going to submit it to town meeting, and a vote by town meeting that they're going to adopt the district.
Sounds fine, those three. We'll put it in there.
The, I'm sorry, though, the intermunicipal agreement doesn't have anything to do with the DIF? That just has to do with the financing?
Well, it has to do with the obligations of the parties are, I assume, because the documents you submitted talk about an intermunicipal agreement between the towns. I don't know what's included in it.
Right, yeah. So, but in not, in not adopting the financing plan, which is the second motion, then there is no intermunicipal agreement?
Well, I think, my suggestion would be, if we come back to a point where we're far enough apart where we can't come to an intermunicipal agreement, move to amend the motion to take that provision out, I'd like to see the buyer kept the feet to get that agreement in a workable form, to move it forward, because this project's going on for a long time. It's going to change, the numbers are going to change a number of different ways, and we just need to, I need to advise the council and the manager, I need to know what Long Meadow's obligations are by who in Long Meadow? The manager, the Selectmen, the town meeting, and what you expect from East Long Meadow, and what the obligations are of the manager and or the town council with respect to that agreement. Because that's a little fuzzy in the materials that I reviewed, and only because I think it's such a new concept, and there's so much involved in this, especially with the amendments that were made to 40-Q in November, trying to intersperse those with the original statute, you know, it's a little confusing sometimes. Anyway, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, no, I agree with those three points. We'll, we'll just have to, you know, get them formalized into the motions, but...
Go ahead, Don.
What he's, you know, he talked about... No, the third, the third matter with the, you know, acceptance or, what is it, review of the inter-community...
Intermunicipal agreement.
You know, an acceptable test, of course, inter, you know, municipal agreement. The other, last question is, just to be clear, because again, we have, it's a new form of government. We can vote on this with a majority vote, we don't need a supermajority. I mean, if we have unanimous vote, we have a supermajority. Just want to be clear on that. Or do we need a supermajority vote on this?
I didn't see a vote required in the statute when I referred to the presenters of anything other than a simple majority.
There, there's no clarification of, it just says must be voted by town or city council and/or town meeting.
Okay.
So it's simple.
Simple majority. Just want to be clear on that one, because...
The binding vote we require would be...
That's for sure, right.
So the motion is what, Pat?
The motion, as you read it, subject to three items, acceptable municipal agreement...
Actions by the Board, Long Meadow Board of Selectmen.
And actions by the, approval by the Long Meadow Board of Selectmen, and approval by their town, Long Meadow town meeting. And then the last point is annexing into the motion...
The appendix.
Meets and bounds.
The appendix, or Exhibit A, or whatever you want to call it, into that motion.
All right, everybody's got that? So I'm going to entertain that motion that he just made with all those things. Is there...
Yeah, he just entertained it, right?
Yeah.
Do I like to move it?
So it's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hear them none, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You too. Do you have any contact information I could have in case I have any questions, I'd appreciate it.
All right, now I need a five minute.
Do you have anything? Uh. I think we got nothing.
Maybe we don't.
No, we, yeah, I think we're down to everything on. Yes.
If any of you have any questions about the actual district or the financing plan, please, you know, my, I'm, I'm here to talk.
I have contact information, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are we in a recess now? No, I think we have nothing left, we can mo- I make a motion adjourned.
No.
No. Sarah, you're up.
How brief can you make this?
Best for last, best for last.
No, I've heard that before. All right.
Can we take it to?
We didn't even vote on that.
Can I start the, the whole presentation?
You can start whatever you want. I'll be glad to have you start.
With, um, with a, a little bit of synopsis of our last meeting. As, as you all recall, or who wasn't at the last meeting?
I wasn't here.
You weren't, and Kevin.
You got here.
Kevin, you weren't.
No, I was not.
No.
Were you here last meeting, Don? You weren't here.
I read it, I read the last.
That's right.
He did. He was the boss.
Made a big impression, soon they forgot.
I was the, I was the general Hague of it.
That's right.
I'm in charge here.
Michael, you not here as well?
No, I, no, it was, um, okay.
So, so for those of you that were not here.
Figured you'd show up and I could flip it over.
Let me just, let me just recap the last meeting, which, which we had a presentation, what was that committee, the bonding? Debt advisory committee.
Right.
Uh, day presentation. And, um, we had a significant conversation with the school board. And, uh, Sarah, both Sarah and I were kinda sick still. Sarah, I, I was a week ahead of her, so she was sicker than I was. So there was a brief overview of the, uh, financial state for the town. However, um, I feel that we have hit the, under the charter, step one of the budget process, which called for a joint meeting with everybody. And, and both Sarah and I are quite anxious to get going on, um, communicating to the town departments that they can start planning their budget, but we need step two of the, of the, um, charter provisions, which says the town manager and the town council shall meet to discuss the town council's priorities for the upcoming fiscal year and discuss the budget format. The town manager will provide the town council and school committee a copy of the draft budget by April first. That's not that far away, and I'm new at it, I, I've done many municipal budgets, so I'm not panicking about it, but you know, this process is going to be different. So, um, I will give you the hesitance of one of the councilmen who said he didn't feel that the last presentation was thorough enough. That's why Sarah is back tonight to do some additional, significant, additional, uh, projections for you all that you have in writing. And if you all are comfortable with giving us some of your, um, priorities for the next meeting, uh, for, for us to, uh, start the budget process, we'll, we'll do that. So, with that said, are you comfortable that we have met, met step one and we're on to step two?
One hundred percent.
Even with those folks that have not, that weren't at that meeting? Okay.
I'm happy with it.
So, um, Sarah has a, a great, you know, great amount of information for you all, you, you have hard copies of it?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So at the last meeting, um, I was asked to provide, um, a budget in four different formats, so I have done so. So one, um, format was to do it presuming a level funding, another was to do a one percent increase, a two percent increase or a three percent increase. We're going to first talk about our revenue sources though, so that is a smaller sheet of the two. And, um, you will see that I included the FY seventeen approved budget, your next column is my FY eighteen projections. Those projections are based on the, uh, fiscal's, uh, two thousand and seventeen levy limit multiplied by, uh, two and a half percent, so our prop two and a half. Um, and then it also takes into account, uh, new growth and debt exclusions. Um, then I did estimates on local receipts and I based those estimates on, um, current year activity, prior year history, budget, and any other outliers that I might know of. And then, um, you have the, uh, transfers from the community preservation, that is simply following off of the debt schedule as to what community preservation pays to general fund in order to then pay the community preservation debt. The chapter seventy lottery and other state aid, those are based off of the governor's, um, estimated budget that is currently online. Um, I checked again this week and these are the most recent numbers, so, um, as those estimates change, these numbers will change slightly, um, most likely, but, um, the governor's budget is not final, so it's just the best guess right now. Um, and then the last item that you'll see there is the MSBA reimbursement, that is one of our debt exclusion items, so as long as we have that debt, we have this reimbursement that we get as well, which offsets some of that debt. Um, and that brings me to my preliminary projection of about fifty eight million dollars, um, in revenue. Now, if you go to the next sheet, um, which has a few more columns than that, you will see I provided it more of a summary level. Um, a couple of the general fund categories, benefits and legal obligations, debt, general government, education and public works. And, excuse me, I provided the FY seventeen approved budget, the estimate as of today, um, and that estimate is, um, per the debt service schedules, um, the benefits and legal obligations, it, so if I know that there's contractual increase or my best estimate on, say, health insurance increases, those, um, costs have not been finalized yet, um, due to some snowstorms. Um, so those are my best guesses, but then when you look at general government, education, and public works, I assumed a level funding, um, from, uh, FY seventeen. And, um, then the other general fund uses, so those would be things like your community preservation, your funding of OPEB stabilization fund, things like that. Um, and then the next columns are one percent increase, two percent increase, and three percent increases. Um, and so those are, are across the board. Um, and that gives you a general idea of, okay, what kind of an impact would a one percent increase have or a two percent or three percent? And if you were to, to flip back to the first page, um, at the bottom of it, you'll see that I summarized, um, and it says the uses budget, which pulls from the top. Um, in the, uh, excuse me, the uses is from the bigger sheet. And so it gives you an idea, okay, that if a level funded budget, we would have approximately two point four million, um, that would be sitting on the table, if you will.
Surplus, for lack of a better term, I guess.
Uh, within the levy limit, so it's, so this is if you were to tax to the max. Now, for those of you who've been around for a few years, you may recall that the appropriations committee was big on making sure to educate people that you don't want to necessarily tax to the max, because then we will reach the twenty five dollars per thousand cap, which is a Massachusetts law. We don't wanna reach that too fast, so, 'cause then you have nowhere else to go. So if you were to tax to the max, that's how much you could additionally do, I do not recommend taxing to the max. Um, it's similar to when you get pre-approved for home mortgage, you don't actually wanna get a mortgage for that amount. Same kind of concept. Exactly.
Eating pasta hamburgers for a long time.
So, and as I mentioned, um, some of these projections are, you know, based off the best estimates that I have at my hands right now. So the governor's budget, they could decide to cut some aid, which would have a big impact on us.
Just out of curiosity, I know there was a, his budget includes a certain amount of unrestricted state aid? There's like a three point nine percent increase in unrestricted state aid. I don't know if that's the right term I'm using, Sarah.
So what I did was I took the amount that has been, um, estimated as being allocated to East Long Meadow, so if there is an undesigned portion, that that would mean, um, I would believe that he could choose to designate that however he wishes, and that was presumably therefore not in the amount designated to us. So when you go onto their website, there's an actual spreadsheet.
The way I read it was like it was an increase in municipal aid, of like a three point nine percent increase in municipal aid that was undedicated municipal aid. So you, as a municipality, could use it, let's say it was originally earmarked for certain accounts, you can only use it for that.
Now, we have the discretion.
General, it's a discretionary fund as opposed to earmarked for certain accounts. So I don't know if that's part of this, not part of it, how that works.
The total amount that the governor put as the estimated budget that they were giving to us is what I included here.
Fair enough.
I did it at a very high level, so it's not the, you know, whether it's for
Right.
this building or that building, I didn't go down.
That's fine, I'm just sure that's in his formulary somewhere, but.
Yep, yep, it's whatever the, he has already said for East Long Meadow.
Fair enough.
So does this make sense to everybody so far? Did I go too fast?
No.
Okay. So.
When you're saying maximum, you don't wanna do.
Right, no.
But if you had to throw in your two cents, would you say one percent is recommended or keeping it level?
I would say that we'd want to be somewhere around both of those, to stay on the conservative side. Um, I don't think that we want to go to the two or three percent. Um, and what I would think is that, um, the town council might want, uh, agree with that more conservative approach and therefore Denise and I would be able to go through and say, okay, with the new d- things that are created by the charter, such as a couple of new positions, those kinds of expenses which are.
That we have to account for.
Exactly, and then for us to then take a look and say, okay, these things we have to put into there, so what does that mean and how does that trickle down to the departments? So I wouldn't wanna say.
So one percent would be, we, we probably could work within that one percent number.
Probably overall, but not, not assuming that that means that all departments therefore get a one percent. This is the overall.
And that would help if we didn't wanna go to the max levy capacity, 'cause you'd have, you've got a buffer.
Then you'd still have a buffer, um, and, um, I, I think that that would be a prudent.
A good conservative target.
And to my, this could be for later discussion, but I'm just asking, if we make that one percent our goal, right? Which is what we're setting a goal here.
You're setting goals, yep.
Looking at the governor's budget, there's a reduction in certain parts of education funding, which is a major part of our overall town budget, right? So, one of the major reductions, it's not even a reduction, it's a level funding, but level funding is quite frankly a reduction based on expense, because it costs more to provide services for special education, right? So if we say, sort of as a blanket, we want this one percent, what do we look at making those adjustments? And the timers add up to the school to make those adjustments, I mean, maybe Kathy can help me.
Well, if you give them marching orders, like with every department, you can't go more than one percent, then they have to figure out how to stay inside of that.
Including those, including that, staying in that, that reduction in funding for other services.
Correct, but they have nine bargaining units, the biggest one being the teachers unit, and they're only in year two of a three year agreement, and I believe going into year three, that it's a one and a half and might even be two percent increase that's already been negotiated.
Yeah.
So staying in a one percent.
Will be tough.
Well, it will be tough.
I'm just sort of.
Reduction in force.
What we're asking today is more of a direction as to what the town council foresees, we're not asking for the specifics by department.
Right.
No, no, I was just, like I said, probably for later discussion.
And so that, just like in prior years when we had supplemental budgets, and then we can use that kind of discretion later. But right now, it's just what is the, the goal? And it sounds like you, you seem to be in agreement that the goal is to be a bit more on the conservative side.
I don't, yeah, I'm all for that, I just.
And that way then we can at least have a goal as to then, how do we give appropriate directions to those departments? Um, in order to come up with what they have to have and then what their wish list is, because everybody has a wish list.
My experience with that is once the parameters were given, the school department would play that out, what would level service look like? What would level fund look like? What would your one percent that you say we could have still look like? What would, you know?
Right.
So if there, if there were to be with a one percent, um, some, you know, reduction in force, they would say that we'd have to cut X, Y, Z.
Right.
Blah, blah, blah.
Then we can make that adjustment later.
However, if you gave us two percent, we might be able to keep it together.
Right.
So understand that the, the town side also has collective bargaining units that have automatic, um, increases coming up as well, so we are a people organization, we don't create widgets. Uh, our personnel are our biggest cost.
Yes, they are.
So, um, and, and some of that is not negotiable, health insurance is very expensive.
Right.
And the projected costs for next year are, are higher than, quite a bit higher than this year. So we will have our challenges for sure, let me just go to, to where I see all of us headed in, in the next month. That as I communicate, and we have a, a department heads meeting tomorrow, so we'll be able to communicate this right tomorrow. Friday, Sarah and I are gonna be meeting on the clear communication and, and forms that the different departments have to have, so we're gonna hit the ground running with this tomorrow. And I would think, and tell me if you disagree, that as I see challenges, for instance, the school board saying there is no way we can do this without eliminating twenty positions or whatever, that I would do at, at each council meeting an update as to where we're heading with the budget and get additional feedback from you all. I do not, I'm not comfortable creating a budget in a total vacuum. It is my responsibility, but as I've said in a couple of presentations recently, I work for you all, we work together as a partnership. And, um, to, to present to you on April first, a budget that is challenged at the very least, or we could stay with the one percent and I'm gutting everything, or I could not meet that goal and have you say, well, what were you thinking? We said one percent.
No, I think if we set some sort of direction, at least we'd know where we're going. And then there's departments, obviously, and I think that one percent direction is kinda like where we're at, but that direction and the whole point of that is to say, yeah, okay, you're not doing it in a vacuum, this is what we'd like to see. Like, sort of our wish list is to stay with one percent, are there gonna be departments that tell us?
Stay one percent overall.
Right.
So, in the whole bottom line, right.
Right, so it could look differently for one department over another.
Right.
Certainly. Or if the governors change, or the health insurance rates settle, you know, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm being too conservative with my rates, you know, and that that they actually come, become in, excuse me, um, have less of an increase than what I'm projecting, then that's great, then that would mean that then there's a bit more wiggle room for those kinds of things, but as long as we have that general direction, um, that, to stay conservative and to stay around a one percent overall, then that gives Denise and I enough to be able to give clear directions to depart, give department heads a clear idea tomorrow, and then give them the clear directions to send out on Friday, um, when we meet and we only have six weeks to do this, so, um, we really.
In, in the past, I mean, it's been, 'cause this is like my eighth budget process, but it's been, we've got X amount of dollars. You get a one percent increase, you work within that increase, there's not, you know, it's not like in your home budget, I make fifty thousand dollars, I can't spend sixty, I can't tell somebody to spend sixty, because
Where am I getting?
You know, so, so that's why you have to, once you set that one percent or whatever, you have to adhere to it, even if it does mean cuts. 'Cause you can't, you can't just go around doing, you know, doing certain things for certain people and not for other people and have, especially with unions and things, and it, it becomes, and there's also other things that the town has to account for, you know, um, money in the stabilization fund, which I know you got there, the old, you know, the OPEB, which we're hardly, we're hardly putting a drop in the bucket there, so.
And that's gonna get bigger.
Our capital projects.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, it, it was more, and Sarah can attest to this, I believe, it was more cut and dried, you get a one percent increase or you get level funding and you deal with it. So, that's what we've done.
And an important thing, I think, for everybody to keep in mind when it comes to the school, is that the school is obligated to follow the budget instructions that we provide and to provide us a budget in the format that we request. However, when you vote to approve the school budget, you are voting just their total dollar amount, and that they can move that around however that they need to. Um, and, and so that's an important thing to think about, you're not gonna be looking at which lines and which departments and which areas there, you're just looking at the total dollar amount for them. And they do a wonderful job.
Generally saying, okay, if there's a cut here, how do they make up for it if we say there's a blanket one, that's what we're looking at?
Well, they make those decisions.
They'll have to make those decisions.
Which is up to them.
Yep, exactly.
As I would be. They can make the tough decisions.
I mean, if you think about their presentation, they did speak about, um, two thousand, the two thousand thirteen, fourteen year, they had to downsize four positions. Luckily, it was a decent enough retirement year where nobody got laid off.
Right.
They absorbed it in other ways.
Right. But they're now looking to add those positions back, which coincides with this one percent, you know?
Right, which ultimately they're gonna have to figure out those are really four positions.
They'll be giving those directions.
Right, I talked a little bit with Pam Blair, and there are eleven retirements coming in June. But I don't know who they are or where they are, and could they get away with, like, oh, well, you know, there's a teacher that we, we could live without that position, so that there may be some ways for them to shuffle.
Yeah, yeah. So, do you have any questions on, on, on what Sarah presented?
My job.
Thank you.
Nice.
My question is to you, what do you think is a good one? What do you think's a good one?
I, I agree with Sarah, I, I am, I am a, a pretty conservative spender, um, which, which works. And at the end of the day, this is my first real look at East Long Meadows budget. So until I get into the guts of where all the expenses are, I, I won't know how difficult it's going to be to do. But it's certainly a, a goal that we need to, to have, and I would be much more comfortable to be able to come to the council at each meeting and just, even if it's part of my report, if there's no need for a big discussion, but just to tell you how we're doing, so that you have a chance for the feedback. Are you agreeable to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wonderful.
No way.
Thank you.
I just have one other question, with the one percent, uh, you're, you're saying that capital projects cannot exceed the one point one million. Am I looking at that correct?
Um, in this current format, yes, so the, the capital projects I estimated as a two percent of the prior year budget. So I did not change that, um, for each of those percentages. Um, but, you know, depending how, when we, um, when we iron out all the details, if we wanted to, we could add a little bit more there, or we could just keep it the same to therefore accommodate some of the other needs that we would see. But that's something that as we're more into the budget process, this is at a high level, um, because some of the positions, as you know, have, you know, contracts just got approved tonight, or, you know, um, or our contracts are going to be approved shortly, and those are going to have big budget impacts, so...
And a question with the capital improvement project, how does, where does that put us with the school building association and their accelerated rehab, the school department's accelerated rehab program for our capital improvements?
For this right here that we're talking about, it really doesn't, no. Um, and, I mean, at our next meeting, when we talk more about budgets, um, I'm sure that then we'll have some more information to provide from a capital standpoint.
And we're waiting on the state to get back to us with whether we approve it and...
Well, the, the thing, the accelerated, um, request doesn't have to be until Friday.
Right.
Um, and then you're at the mercy of the MSBA. For that, they'll be in April or May, but it's, it's for the following year, it does not impact any of this.
Right.
And then if they got invited, I'm sorry, if they were invited to move further, um, then we would have to appropriate the hundred thousand or whatever to do the feasibility.
And they just split out, we just got, uh, an update late this afternoon where I had asked that can we split out what the feasibility studies would be from the actual project and maybe do it over two years rather than one, so they just provided us with that late this afternoon.
And the feasibilities are reimbursing the same rate, right?
Yes.
It can come out of whatever, right?
It can come out of the move, if we spend a hundred thousand, you get fifty cents on a dollar, it'd give you fifty grand. You still got to come up with fifty grand.
Right.
Right, I mean, it's...
So, so that's why...
It's still not free, really.
No, it's not, but it lessens your, if you're...
Well, I just need, people need to understand, there's a lot that goes into it that isn't sort of public knowledge.
Well, the everyday guy doesn't, you know, get to the weeds of all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, um, so I think we have some clear direction.
I think we do.
I feel much better about it today than I did yesterday.
And, um, at the next, um, meeting, I will, um, I did prepare the debt information, um, and so I will have that, um, for you then. I'll, um, send out the, the drafts ahead of time for everyone to get to look at, so you can have your questions ready. Um, but then we can talk more about, um, the debt issues separately then.
All right, sounds good. Don, I think we're up to your motion now.
Make a motion adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back for me?